Okay, it is 9:30. The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:30 a.m. Today's meeting is being transmitted via live stream from the district's website at www.cochetodesert.edu. President Kennaman, will you do roll call please?
Yes, Student Trustee Garcia. Trustee Stefan.
Present.
Trustee Perez.
Present.
Trustee Wilson.
Present.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton. Trustee Yant.
Present. Trustee Stefan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, thank you. Everyone, please stand. Hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic-
To the republic for-
For which it stands-
Which it stands.
One nation-
One nation.
Under God-
Under God.
Indivisible-
Indivisible.
With liberty-
With liberty.
And justice-
And justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pursuant to Government Code 54954.2B2, the Board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon a determination by two-thirds vote of the Board. Or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present, that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted specified. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for May 15, 2020?
No, we have no changes.
There are none, the agenda stands as confirmed, as presented. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of April 8, 2020?
There are none.
There are none. They stand approved. Public comments. According to Executive Order N-25-20 and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on Gatherings, remote participation is allowed and being accepted by email to otpcollege.edu and read into the record during the comments. As of this morning, we had two. I have one and Julia has one. And I'll read the first and ask Julia to read the second. Good morning, Board of Trustees. My name is Sergio Mungas and I am a second-year student at College of the Desert. My reason for making a public comment is due to the challenges stressors undocumented students within our community are currently facing. Although I am aware that we all have been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, we have to also understand that we are being impacted in different ways. As a college student, you will experience many stressors. Financial instability should not be one of them. This, however, is a very real fear that is a constant sense of concern for undocumented students, which has been intensified by our current situation. Despite the fact that College of the Desert has showcased support for undocumented students, the reality is that while there has been relief for students such as the CARES Act, support for our state-led community has been lagging behind. No, I am not. No, we are not asking for a handout, but rather support. Support for the entire community, not only certain sections. As an undocumented college student, my biggest educational fear is that one day, after years of hard work and dedication, a financial barrier may come between me and my current goals, career goals. However, having an available support system can contribute greatly to one's ability to overcome or be incapacitated by hardships. Many of us formerly held jobs, sometimes more than one, in order to pay for our educational needs, many of whom have lost their jobs due to this crisis. I am currently in limbo regarding whether I will receive the aid I need to cover my fall tuition costs, a situation that has been brought upon in direct connection to this time of increased difficulty. I may not have the opportunity to experience what I had previously believed to be my final semester at College of the Desert before transferring. The current spring semester can potentially turn out to be not only my last semester at College of the Desert, but in any other school. We are productive members and continuously strive to contribute to our community. For many people, including myself, your support will mean continuing the progress for a better future. It will mean not throwing away years of hard work and dedication. It will mean keeping a dream alive. Respectfully, Sergio Mungas. And that was received and read. Julia, we received the second. Can you read that one, please?
Yes, Board Chair. Good morning, Board of Trustees. I hope you and your families are well and healthy. My name is Vanessa Marino and I'm the Coachella Program Coordinator for the Council of Mexican Federations, also known as COFEM. I shared with you all about our college success program during the board meeting that was held in Coachella Library last year in October. Today, I am here to speak for our undocumented college students. As you know, undocumented students were unjustly excluded from the CARES Act Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund. However, colleges, including the UC and CSU systems, have stated that they will be using their own funds to provide emergency financial aid grants to support their undocumented students. It was also good to see that the CCC filed a lawsuit against the Education Department over COVID-19 relief funds. These steps and actions are needed and make strong statements that no student should be left behind. During this pandemic, our undocumented students are some of the most vulnerable individuals as many are facing economic hardships. These students did not receive the federal stimulus check unless they were DACA recipients. To add to that, if their parents are undocumented, they also did not receive the $1,200 check. If their parents are of mixed status and filed their taxes jointly, then they too did not receive this aid. Many have lost their jobs and don't even qualify for unemployment or other federal assistance programs. This is why it is so critical to support these students because not only do they have to worry about themselves, but about their families as well. The Dreamers Resource Center has been a blessing to many and I can tell you from my end, it has been easier to connect students to a safe space and a support system. I appreciate all the great things COD has done for our undocumented student population. This time, due to the current public health crisis, I am asking you to please ensure all students receive their support they need to overcome these challenges. Nevertheless, it hasn't been agreed or confirmed. I hope COD provides emergency financial aid grants to our undocumented students. If I can be of any assistance, please don't hesitate to let me know. Thank you for your time and have a great rest of your day. Best regards, Vanessa Marino, Coachella Program Coordinator for the Council of Mexican Federations in North America.
Julia, did we receive a third?
I do not have any further comments received at this time.
I want to thank both students for their public comments and I'm pleased that we were able to read them into the record for all to be able to consider. We now move to public updates. President Kennaman, it's your turn for updates.
Thank you, Board Chair. At this time, I would like to ask Vice President Dr. Annabelle Neary to provide some updates from Instruction.
So, I'd like to share the great work that our faculty and staff had done on the instructional side. In just a matter of days, they migrated all classes and sections online. In addition to that, we were able to work closely with Student Services and IT to issue Chromebooks, Dell computers, webcams, and hotspots for Wi-Fi access within a matter of days and in some cases within 24 hours. Now, the instructional faculty have been working hard in terms of the fall term being 100% completely online. I'm proud to say that science faculty have recorded their labs and in some cases, they did over 70 videos. In other cases, our applied sciences and business faculty have been creative in their filming relations that they present to students within lab settings. Our nursing faculty and our health sciences faculty have been some of the most creative, committing what we call now call telehealth where they can do telephone screening at a safe distance and our students can still meet their clinical requirements. In light of the current environment and Instruction, I think we were able to respond as a team and collegially for students and communities and we were ahead in some of the most innovative practices that we are now sharing with the state and nation. And we will continue to be there for the students and the community and build more classes so that in this time when our community needs us the most, we will have available classes and they will have a place to study and continue their education and continue their pathway to a career.
Thank you, Dr. Neary. Next, I'd like to ask our Vice President of Student Services Jeff Baker to provide an update from Student Services.
Thank you so much, President Kennaman. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank all the faculty, staff, and leadership in Student Services for doing such an amazing job. They have and continue to go above and beyond to support both our students and their colleagues throughout the campus community during this difficult time. We are moving right along. Registration for summer and fall beginning May 4th and even during this challenging time, our registration for both summer and fall are looking good. This is due to the efforts of Student Services and Instruction working together strategically as possible in building a comprehensive program that meets the needs of our community. To highlight a few student programs, our counselors are reaching out continuously to provide counseling services in Branium Cafe and Conex Ed. The Student Health and Wellness Center is holding weekly online workshops to support our students with their experience and emotions regarding the COVID-19 crisis multiple days a week. TASS continues to provide online tutoring and on May 16, tomorrow, from 10 to 2, they'll be hosting a study jam to help our students prepare for final exams. Our financial aid and admissions staff are working extremely hard with registering, awarding scholarships, and providing financial aid dispersments. A piece of that, our Chatbot program, which we recently implemented, which is an online service that provides automatic responses to student questions in both English and Spanish, is getting over 13 hits a week, 1,300 hits a week, I mean. And I'd also like to thank the Colleges Foundation Board and this really will help the two students that submitted a report because our Board and Chris Anderson and her team, when the pandemic hit, they immediately set aside emergency funds for all of our students who are in crisis. As of May 14, 79 students have been issued emergency funds from the foundation totaling almost $50,000 and we continue to receive requests every single day. So please get us that information on the students, we'll be happy to work with them. As we're heading into what would traditionally be our commencement time, our commencement committee has worked diligently to come up with an alternative plan. We actually surveyed our graduating students, 1,705, which I believe is our largest class ever. And the majority wanted to be in attendance person, that's the feedback that we got. So we will invite them in the future for when this is, when the stay-in-place is lifted, when we can, don't have the social distancing. But in the meantime, we believe that our graduates deserve to be celebrated. And so the commencement committee has come up with a plan. I believe that plan has been sent to all of you, it's been distributed or will be soon. I won't go into detail just for the sake of the length of the report, but we believe we've got a great plan coming ahead for our students. And again, I really want to thank everyone that's been so supportive of making it happen and Dr. Neary and her team because I really believe it's the collaborative work of Student Service and Instruction working so closely that really makes that such a great difference for our students.
Thank you, Vice President Baker. And again, thank both of you for your leadership in ensuring that our students' needs are met during this time. Every year during the third week of May, we recognize the important contributions of our classified staff during Classified School Employee Week. Much of the work of our classified staff can be seen outside the classroom. They are responsible for everything from keeping our grounds and buildings safe, running payroll, processing financial aid, registering students, and making sure our computers and technology work properly, just to name a few. These employees are the everyday heroes who play a critical role in our success and the ultimate success of the students we serve. Thank you to all of our classified staff for giving your best to our college and our students. That concludes our public updates.
Vice President Baker, I'm not sure that we have received the plan that you referenced.
Okay, I'll get it to you. I will get that information to you specifically.
Thank you. And I should note that Trustee Sanchez Fulton has joined us. President Kennaman, does that include your report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Written reports that were submitted to the Office of the President will be incorporated into the meeting minutes and posted online. If you have not sent over your written report, so before the end of business today by emailing Julia Dyer in the President's office. Julia, will you please list the reports you have received as of now?
Yes, Board Chair. I have received a board report from the College of the Desert Foundation, CSEA, Coda, and the Academic Senate.
So could I ask the other units to please forward your written report to Julia by the end of business today? And again, let me repeat that the trustees really do appreciate these reports as this is how we monitor what's happening. So Julia will be watching for these and distributing them when they arrive. Thank you. We now move to the Governing Board reports. I need to check to see if Student Trustee Garcia is online.
Yes.
She is, thank you. I now have the pleasure of recognizing Student Trustee Kiana Garcia, who has served on our Board during the past decade in the year. A local Coachella Valley graduate, Student Trustee Garcia started at College of the Desert in the fall of 2018 and will be receiving her Associate's Degree in Political Science this semester. A pledge edge participant, she has worked hard during her tenure to support and guide fellow students toward the resources they need to be successful. She's also been a fierce College of the Desert advocate within our community, promoting the college and our programs to local high school students. She plans to transfer to UC Santa Barbara, where she will continue studying political science, eventually leading to her career in public service. It's been said that board service is one of the toughest volunteer roles of all and Student Trustee Garcia, you've performed with dedication and tenacity. I speak for all of my fellow board members when I thank you for your service. And we believe that you have been provided a plaque commemorating your time on the Board. If that is possible, would you fold that up so viewers at home can see your plaque? Are we not seeing it?
Oh, yeah.
We're seeing it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll... Trustee Garcia, you can begin your report.
Thank you. So the last item that I've completed as Student Trustee, I spoke to this new Student Trustee at California Indian Nations College. I sort of gave him some tips, I talked to his advisor as well and gave him some resources he needs to learn to serve as Student Trustee at a new school that was newly developed in 2018. So that was really fun and that was my last goodbye as Student Trustee and talking about it. This is a very bittersweet moment for me. I had different plans for the rest of the year, but I hope, at least for the rest of this year, that students are all granted EWs and are able to retake the classes that they possibly had to drop due to this pandemic. I know that the next Student Trustee after me will do great things and I wish them the best of luck. I'm proud to say I've continued my education at UCSB. I'm excited and I'm sad to leave College of the Desert. I cherish all of the friendships I made with all of the staff and faculty and students and professors. But that's okay because my brother will be attending school next year and you can introduce him and welcome him. I will continue to advocate for a community college and I wish the class of 2021 the best. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Board members may have the opportunity to give you messages and congratulations later in our session. Thank you. Chief, among the responsibilities of the Board is governing through policy, includes discussions of values, future trends, and community needs. I've asked my fellow board members if they would like to share and speak about any general issues they see us facing in the future. Of course, this is optional, particularly if any trustee has other matters to discuss. And we'll begin with Trustee Stefan.
Thank you, Trustee Yant. Well, I'd like to first start off by congratulating Trustee Garcia and just to let you know that I will miss you terribly. I've enjoyed working with you, you're a great asset to the Board. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all of the teachers belatedly for Teacher Appreciation Week last week and thank all of our classified employees this week. And I understand this is also Nursing Month. So Nurses Appreciation Month. So I'd like to let the nurses know, particularly those at our campus, how much we appreciate all that they do. This is a very difficult time for all of us and the one thing that I hope that we're all trying to do is keep keep our own selves safe and healthy. And I know that many educators around the globe are very stressed out because they're unable to help students adequately or they feel that they should be able to do more and they can't make contact. But at the same time, they need to realize that they also not only need to take care of themselves or their students and their families, but they also need to take care of themselves. So I hope that everyone involved in education is making an effort to at least try to take care of themselves. I think of that Milano Cookie ad, Milano Cookie ad, where the lady locks herself in the bathroom and enjoys a cookie. And I would hope that everyone in education takes some time each day just to indulge themselves some way so that they are better able to cope with the stresses that they find in trying to meet the demands of what society is putting on us. As we are facing these times, there are many things that we need to consider. And I'm hoping that when we do the evaluation later today, the board evaluation, that we will look into some of the avenues that we may have to approach in the future because there are a lot of things to consider. The distancing may require us to have smaller-sized classes. It may require us to do more online and just meet with partial classes in the future. We've already changed the way we do things for the fall and I think that was a bold step that the Board took and I want to congratulate the Board on that. We have heard back from some faculty thanking us for that. I know there are major budget cuts and I know that there will be things that we don't like having to do in the future, but I know that together we will survive this. And each day, it's a matter of putting one's foot forward at a time and continuing on the path that we know is going to get us to where we want to be in the future and that is having everyone as much as possible being safe and healthy. And I'm going to end my board report there for today. Thank you.
Trustee Perez?
Good morning, everyone. First and foremost, I'd like to start off by congratulating Kiana Garcia. Thank you for your service this past year on the Board and congratulations and best of luck to you on your new endeavors. UC Santa Barbara is a beautiful campus and a beautiful area. My little brother is an alumni and he loved it, so you are going to enjoy it. I'd also like to extend another congratulations to our very own Bonnie Stefan for receiving the Fulfilling the Trust Award. Bonnie, thank you for serving our community for 20 years. I would love to celebrate with you, but we will when we can. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Anderson for serving on the Foundation Board the last six months or last few months or whatever it was. She definitely helped keep us afloat, so thank you for all that you did there. And with that, I'd like to talk a little bit about our future and what that looks like for the college. As you guys all know, these are very unprecedented times, have been very tough times. And COVID-19 has disproportionately affected folks, specifically in my district in the east side. As we see the numbers go up, although I'm very proud of the work that we've done by dispersing the Chromebooks and the hotspots, it's about ensuring that our students' needs are met, checking in with them, making sure that they have what they need, especially our incoming freshmen who are going to be navigating through college for the first time and that's hard enough as it is. And being thrown into online education for the first time can be very difficult. So ensuring that they have the resources that they need and making sure that they know that they're available to them and for staff and faculty as well. I think we have to be, I think we have been, but we have to be cognizant of the fact that this is difficult for them as well. And I know that some very difficult decisions lie ahead, very difficult decisions as we prepare for some very big budget cuts. We should also prepare for more enrollment, but with a smaller budget, I think that's going to be imminent and coming as four-year universities are moving toward an online format. And I think students will realize that it might be more beneficial to them to stay home and it'll be... So I think that's something for us to keep in mind. Mr. Chair, that is my report, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson? Trustee Wilson, I think you've moved it.
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to share my colleague's recognition of Student Trustee Garcia and to thank her for her participation as a trustee this year. You've done an outstanding job. I've watched you grow this past year and really want to commend you and the Very Congrats Trust Award from CL C, I think it is, and for your longtime service to College of the Desert and the district as a whole. So thank you, Bonnie, well deserved. Really kind of thought about what I was going to say today, there's so many things that one wants to say. So first of all, let me again express my gratitude to everyone for all their dedication and hard work in transitioning our campus to a virtual world of online courses. It's been a massive effort, which has taken a lot of cooperation, a lot of give and take, long hours, patience, tenacity, figuring out what we have and what we're going to need in order to continue to achieve student success. So many, many thanks to our executive team, faculty, adjuncts, classified staff, everyone who's been on the front line, meeting the challenges presented from the pandemic and the shuttering of our campuses, resulting in the training and conversion of classes to online. From time to time, I do review our mission to make sure that we are doing everything, enrich and train. And given these extraordinary life and death circumstances that were presented and incredible work done by all associated with COD, I believe we continue to meet the mission of College of the Desert. But there are some areas that I think could require some additional focus. One, I'd like to mention the Foundation and- One, I'd like to mention the foundation and join trustee Perez in thanking Dr. Anderson for her leadership on the on the foundation with the foundation. And also to congratulate the foundation board on the good work they've done this past year. I understand Bill Chenowitz is going to continue his chair and thank him for that. And but I'm also thrilled and excited that there's a new foundation executive director coming on board. This person is going to be bringing a lot of skills and experience to COD, and we're going to need every bit of it. I receive daily emails and letters from local nonprofits asking for funds to help make it through this crisis. And right now, it's our college, the people that work and teach. They're the students and programs that need help. I applaud all that's been done. And I believe that COD is the spoke in the wheel of the Coachella Valley. We are the training ground, the transfer school. So I think the foundation needs to develop diversified fundraising strategies that our communities will will identify with. I also applaud the state chancellor's office and the five California community colleges for the lawsuit filed against the Secretary of Education with regards to student access to grant funds under the CARES Act. I also wonder why our district did not join with this lawsuit, particularly with the opening and the success of our Dreamer Resource Center, our geographic location, our demographics. And perhaps there's a letter of support that we can do, Mr. Chair, or we can discuss at some later time. You also, Mr. Chair, you asked about changing conditions that are going to affect education in the valley. And I believe the time is right for some new collar jobs that have kind of broken through with through this pandemic that don't require a four-year degree, but they do need the right kind of training that we can and already are doing at COD. And so we should look at expanding our programs to meet these kind of new job niches such as cloud computing technicians, IT jobs, cybersecurity analysts, and including those soft skills that that are also necessary. And and how these jobs can be done from home. So and perhaps we might even consider a virtual career fair. I have read of other colleges having successfully done this. I also realize that like other community colleges and state universities, COD is is going to take a financial hit. A revenue decline over the next year or two, so we're going to be tightening our our belts and making those difficult decisions. And we're going to have to see how all this pans out. If I may, Mr. Chair, just cut a couple more minutes. And while this is sobering, I'm really glad that we have folks like John Ramon overseeing our various pots of funds. Finally, I would like to recognize the Cal State University's chancellor for keeping the fall semester totally online at all California State Universities. This was a tough decision, but when you weigh the health risk to students and to communities, there really is only one way to go with this. So many thanks to you, Mr. Chair, for your board leadership. And to my board colleagues, to President Kidman for his leadership and for particularly working closely with our K through 12s and our four-year colleges to collectively map out the education and training of our students over this next year. And thanks for our executive cabinet and to all that contributed to the well-being of College of the Desert. So so many, many thanks. We can, as our motto has been, continue COD strong. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Trustee Sanchez Fulcher.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So first of all, I want to congratulate Bonia Stefan for her award. And congrats to the class of 2020. I think the dedication of these students first and foremost are very important. Also wanted to make a comment in regards to Nursing Month and Teacher Appreciation Week that we just had. I'd like to, at this time, give hold on one second. A statement that we'd like to make. I wonder how many of you would be willing to make the tough decisions that many of our leaders had to make during the COVID-19 crisis. I see so many who are complaining about still being locked down, wanting to return to work and class. And I, we all understand that to some degree, but I would like, I myself would like to go out to a movie or just option to travel. Sadly, these times have been restricted in many ways that have never, we've ever experienced before in our lifetime. At COD, we had to make significant changes in the era of COVID, leaning to educational challenges that often leave the poorest and the most underserved students further underserved, especially our undocumented students. However, we at COD have mitigated a lot of these issues, which I'm very proud that our team, our leadership, our faculty, our staff are qualified, have done wonderful, providing them free laptops, providing Wi-Fi hotspots, providing educational emergency grants to students and giving financial aid. Many of my constituents have emailed me and told me to thank them because without those Wi-Fi hotspots, they were unable to take their online classes. So they're very, very appreciative, received a lot of thank yous and made their, lowered their anxiety during this time. As someone who played and rolled to move our COD to full online operations and being part of the leadership with my fellow boards, I understand the pressures that decision makers may face when handling such a crisis. We at the Board of Trustees were not ignorant to the burden that was placed, a full burden for our faculty, our staff, and students when moving into this direction. But it was done in hope that we ultimately will provide the best to the students. Any decision to try and continue to do business as usual was met with a reality that we could potentially harm a student. I personally would not be able to live with someone in my conscious mind if something were to happen to someone on our campus. The harsh reality that a student, if a student were attending our school in person, fresh out of high school, trying to get through their first year of college, they should not, it turns out that three weeks later, they are in undiagnosed condition and their disease is not destroying their body from within. The position that we took to have all online is for the safety for all on our campuses. See, COVID is, virus is very real. The high morbidity, the lack of vaccine, and no significant process towards treating the most extreme cases make it a real threat. New strains are going to be coming that have not been published of the COVID. The most coming from Northern California and health officials. The most urgent task for our College of the Desert family is to keep the safety of our faculty, staff, and students while providing an education. I hope with your patience and your continued dedication during this online world, our new normal will shine even brighter for COD in the future. I want to thank everyone with their patience on providing that. Now, with that, I would like to mention what I see very important, of course, is our budget that the governor just came out yesterday. I'm very, very concerned. Also, the resources, although the CARES Act have provided a lot of the safety net, they're sobering numbers for our colleges throughout the state. As your representative throughout the state of California in the league, I concur with trustee, I appreciate that from trustee Wilson that we must join our community okay, in support of the lawsuit that the, our chairman Eloy has made on behalf of California. So that's my ask to our chairman. Also, a concern that I'm having, that I have received is our public safety, I want to have maybe a future update in regards of passing our our first responders. How are we going to streamline our public safety academy? Our EMTs. We at the state level want to see lax requirements for our students, because a lot of the police academy are, you have to go in person, but we are trying to work on and pressure the state to lax a lot of the training programs for the future. Our EMTs, our fire, our fire academy, and nursing especially. So if, I would love our college to join me in making recommendations on what we're trying to do at the state is trying to streamline a lot of our those types of classes online, because currently the laws are made for physical, the hours that they have to do in our first responders. Another future area is having the College of the Desert train our staff on badges, on Google, online training for our faculty and our students. I think we need to be going into more artificial intelligence and working on new technologies, new degrees in, especially in the medical field, digital medical coding. The hospitals due to COVID are now needing more staff in online medical coding and cybersecurity. So I personally would love to see more training on that. So basically, I just want to thank again all our faculty, our staff, President Kimin for making, working with our K through 12s on this unprecedented time that we have and shine like good road runners do. Thank you so much. Everyone be safe. And please shelter in spite at home. Thank you.
Thank you. The major social disruptions of the past turned our culture in unanticipated ways. Just 9/11's impact on surveillance is a recent example. Some educators across the country are hoping for the day when things return to normal. Although it is most likely that things will not return to the way they were. It's time for us as a college to begin to anticipate some of these changes and be proactive rather than reactive. Studies suggest that some 40% of currently laid off workers will not have jobs to return to. How will COD be prepared to help this workforce as they look to learn new jobs and skills? Today, across the country, we have some 4,000 degree granting institutions and some 1,000 more trade and technical schools. In the past few years, we've seen many of these institutions closing their doors. There's every reason to expect that trend will continue and increase. It's time to ask questions like, why should we be one of those that continue? And it's not only that we continue, but in what form? Many years ago, I interviewed the founder of National University, which pioneered an alternative model of education. He made it clear to me that in his mind, that while our accrediting agencies do serve to guarantee a baseline, they also have the effect of shaping all colleges to be basically the same. It's no longer to be a college's sole mission to serve a geographical area. A Coachella Valley student can today easily stay in the Coachella Valley at home and enroll in any number of on-degree institutions. What we provide besides our geographical location. Our incoming class in the fall will be unlike any in the past. They are already comfortable with social media. And now they have spent several months growing comfortable with online learning. How many will find sitting in a classroom at a specified day and time an advantage? They've grown accustomed to learning at any time and at their own pace. While the faculty's critical role in course delivery has changed as the faculty's role in curriculum development and review will certainly expand to meet these new challenges. For example, traditionally, in agrarian United States, education had two semesters with the summer off. Knowledge was divided into semester-length blocks, and we agreed that so many of these semester-length blocks constituted the requirements for a degree. I see some community colleges today are already questioning this long-held assumptions and offering fast-track degree programs based on competencies which students master at their own pace and at their own time and location. It's time to be open to creative curriculum approaches. Many of the aspects of a college that have long been assumed could now come under review. The functions of libraries and bookstores may change. Building plans may be reviewed. Student services may take on a new look and new delivery modes to respond to student continuing needs for structure and support. A crisis like 9/11 are today can leave us scared, suspicious, and self-centered. But it can also be a time to improvise and to develop solidarity and resolve. That begins with taking the time to ask, what is the role of College of the Desert today in the future? If we don't address that question and assume we will somehow magically the way things were before, we will be left behind the institutions who are making significant changes right now. Thank you. Superintendent. Kenman.
Yes, thank you, trustee Young. And thank you for those words. I think I'll start with the congratulating student trustee Garcia. I'm thanking her for her time at the college and being part of our family. And we've all come to have very warm, fond relationships with you and wish you the best as you go forward and know that you're going to do wonderful things. Now I'm going to move to less positive news so that I end my report, my lengthy report with positive news. We've mentioned state budget. The governor announced yesterday some pretty drastic measures. The student-centered funding formula was slashed by approximately $600 million. And when combined with foregone cost of living adjustment, according to the revised budget, that represents about a 10% reduction. 50% of the strong workforce monies of 135 million dollars were cut. 68 million cut from programs for low-income students, foster youth, and those with disabilities. 83.2 million cut from apprenticeship programs. Approximately 32 million cut for enrollment growth. 11.4 million cut for food pantries. 5.8 million cut for staff that support undocumented students to access financial aid. The positive in the budget is our Cal Grants program are still intact, which is a critical program for all of our students and especially the students that we serve. So we are going to be facing some challenges. And we have been reviewing and developing some plans, and we will continue to do that in consultation with our constituents and weather through this. And we are very fortunate that for the past five or six years, we've experienced growth. And that we are not a district that is currently have spent down their reserves and are having challenges with their enrollments. So with that, I'm very optimistic. But I'm very real in understanding that we are facing some challenges that are unprecedented for California community colleges. And as we do that, we are also, in many ways, looking at opportunities to reinvent our Opportunities to reinvent ourselves and to be innovative. And to be unique amongst other educational institutions and meeting our students' needs. Every year, the Community College League of California recognizing is recognizes then during dedication and service. Of California's Community College Trustees with the Fulfilling the Trust Award. This award honors trustees who have served twenty years on a community college district board and acknowledges their service again every ten years thereafter. Earlier this month, the league honored our very own trustee Bonnie Stefan. Having served as a trustee for the Desert Community College District since nineteen ninety nine. Trustee Stefan has been a strong advocate for access accessibility and transparency in education. And has been instrumental in the college's adoption of programs and initiatives that address some of the biggest issues facing community colleges today. Thank you for your service, Dr. Stefan, and congratulations on this special recognition. At this time each year, I present our celebration of success. I'm taking a second here. Every year at this time, I provide the board trustees with information on accomplishments. Of the prior year. Today's report is going to recognize some of the amazing things that took place prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic. As well as recognize some of the heroic efforts that have taken place since then. As usual, I've chosen to highlight the really, really big things, which means I've left out many more things uh that couldn't be included. Everything we do on a daily basis supports the five goals identified in our strategic master plan, starting at the top, student success. Prior to COVID nineteen, the college was on track to celebrate a record number of graduates for the sixth year in a row next week at the Indian Wells Tennis Garden. Due to social distancing mandates, we were forced to cancel this event, but we remain committed to our celebrating the accomplishments. Compliments of our record breaking class of twenty twenty. Last month, the commencement task force polled students and asked them for feedback on how they would like to be celebrated. Plans are currently underway for the college's first ever virtual commencement ceremony, which will take place later this summer honoring more than seventeen hundred College of the Desert graduates. Regardless of the type of ceremony, the accomplishments of these graduates deserve to be celebrated. Among them will be our second class of pledge participants. I am pleased to announce the coronavirus is not stopping our edge and pledge program. To help transition to distance learning, the edge and pledge staff offered students one on one assistance with their My C O D. School portal, web advisor, campus and Zoom in March and April. And our summer edge program will be completely online. To combat the loss of our high school visit days, high school senior, high school senior information sessions were created using Zoom. These sessions provide seniors who will be attending the College of the Desert in the fall of two thousand twenty with the information needed to stay on track as a new student. Working with counselors at our Coachella Valley High Schools, we are beginning to see increased involvement and more edge and pledge pro- program signups. Student success. Throughout the past year, we've added several support services like the addition of a new Dreamer Resource Center. And a foster youth support services center in the South Annex, along with a host of technology based services. In November, we added a new system called Q Less, which alleviates the need for students to stand in line for financial aid and admissions. And the spring, we added chatbot, an online system that allows students to chat with a live admissions and financial aid representative twenty four hours a day. In response to the coronavirus, we enhanced our usage of the chatbot with additional financial aid, admissions and records and general information related to COVID nineteen. Our athletics recap. The past year all also saw some outstanding achievements for our athletic programs. Men's tennis finished first in the state and women's tennis finished seventh in the final International Tennis Association rankings. Women's golf finished sixth in the state. Men's soccer went to the Southern California Regional Playoffs for the second straight season. Women's volleyball won the inaugural Inland Empire Athletic Conference Title. Softball was on track for their first conference title since two thousand fifteen. And two College of the Desert head coaches, Enrique Calderon, men's soccer, and Aaron Lynn, women's golf, were named. Coaches of the year for their respective sports. While the current pandemic has forced the cancellation of the fall of the twenty twenty California Community College Athletic Association Spring Sports Season. C C C A A remains fully operational and committed to helping its student athletes reach their academic and athletic goals. Equity gaps. The COVID nineteen crisis has shown the light even more brightly on the equity gaps that are present in our society today. Refocusing and doubling our focus on student success has never been more important. As we implement distance learning, we are keeping equity in sight. I applaud the efforts of our faculty and staff. What they have undertaken to ensure our students still have access to quality education. To date, we have provided Chromebooks to more than a hundred students and our library and printing services staff have scanned and made available online. Many of the books our students routinely check out from the library. In addition, many service providers are making free and low cost internet access available for students. And we're waiving late fees and shut offs for non payments. California connects partnership with the chancellor's office is offering low cost mobile hotspot services. Recognizing that some students may be forced to withdraw due to the emergency, the chancellor signed an executive order. That eases requirements for excused withdrawals and refunds. But we are hopeful that the numerous resources and assistance we are offering will keep students in school and on track for completion. College of the Desert students, like most community college enrollees, are particularly vulnerable to being knocked off track academically. If they lose their jobs and suffer from food or housing and security. We are dedicated to assisting them through the this crisis by providing continued access to classes and support. Community resources, including employment, food, textbook and connectivity information are available on. A special coronavirus website webpage on our college website. Meanwhile, thanks to the College of the Desert Foundation. There has been an outpouring of support through emergency funding. To our students that are in need. The foundation has identified and raised more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Student Emergency Fund. To date, they have distri- distribute, excuse me, distributed more than forty thousand to seventy four students. Who have requested assistance for items such as rent, utilities, gas and food. The response of the foundation has significantly impacted individual students in their efforts to stay in college and meet some of their basic needs. Planning government governance, our guided pathways. The second goal from our strategic master plan is to effectively utilize planning and governance, even with all of the progress you just heard about. Our work is far from over. The college has been very active this past year implementing guided pathways, a component of the chancellor's vision for success. Pillar teams composed of faculty, staff, students and leadership are actively implementing guided pathways at College of the Desert. Some of the highlights from their efforts include the adoption of open education resources, which includes the low or no cost textbooks in many of our classes. To date, more than sixty faculty members have started to utilize these resources, resulting in net savings of over seventy one thousand dollars for our students. Additional courses will be added in upcoming semesters. Meta major categories have been identified and are moving through the all faculty senate and college planning council for approvals. Educational program maps for each department are close to completion. Working with technology, with the technology committee, we are moving the college website to a new platform that will allow for better navigation and organization. Using resources available through the chancellor's offices, online vision resource center and our human resources department. We are creating an online orientation and professional development site for faculty and staff. We know that most students use their smartphone as their primary technology tool. In response, in March, we launched a new College of the Desert mobile app that organizes all of our college programs and services. Into one online repository, available on both the Apple and Google Play stores. Top, top features include access to campus communications, direct login to Canvas, web advisor, Q Less and more. Access to the campus directory and and important phone numbers, registration for classes and student ed plans. Student access to their My C O D email and more. In just one month, we had more than thirty one hundred downloads of the app. We've heard a lot of positive feedback from our students and are planning additional enhancements, including interactive maps, responsive webpages and more. Planning governance, the Bellwether Award. Earlier this year, College of the Desert was named the finalist for the prestigious Bellwether Award in the planning governance and finance category. The college submitted Walking the Talk, an integrated planning approach to help students succeed, which tells the story of how College of the Desert has adopted. A culture of student success that guides our work and our decisions on a daily basis. Our strategy, strategy has been intentional. Tailored classes to the skills and workforce needs of local businesses improve completion rates by developing programs that prepare students for the rigors of college or local classes. And offer free tuition for recent high school graduates with a range of support services to help them succeed. It's a strategy that is working thanks to the dedication and commitment that has been shown at every level of our organization, including you, the board of trustees. Also, our leadership, our faculty and our staff. It's taken our entire team and I am thankful for everyone's efforts. In addition to offering support services, we are also investing in our campuses to meet the needs of current and future students. Here are some of the exciting updates. At the Palm Desert Campus, work has been completed or is nearing completion on several projects, including the newly renovated Hill. The Central Quad and the revitalized C Building. Consistent with our new facilities plan, which was completed this la- this past fall, we have updated and modernized the historic core of the Palm Desert Campus. And have restored the mid century architecture that complements the original campus design aesthetic. The Hill renovation adds to the functionality of a building, of the building extending it beyond traditional library use. With room for study and informal learning spaces and the the required data and I T infrastructure needed for today's instruction and learning. Indio. Last fall, I previewed plans to double the size of our Indio campus. In alignment with the city and its downtown vision, the project will add classrooms, lab and collaboration spaces and food service areas. Much progress has been made on on the project as well as a concurrent project, creating a new child development center, which we hope to open close to the same time. These projects are a testament to the commitment the college has to the East Valley and its students. Further breaking down barriers, we've added additional support services and enhanced class offerings at our temporary Palm Springs, Desert Hot Springs and mega thermal campuses. Allowing students to earn their entire general A A certificate. For California State University and University of California at each of these sites. We've also partnered with the city of Coachella to offer classes in the new Coachella Library. The college recently selected an executive architect and is actively planning the specifications for a new automotive and advanced transportation facility to be located near Perez Road. On Highway one eleven adjacent to the Cathedral Cathedral City Auto Center. Driven by student interest and the need for local internships and employment opportunities, this new student resource is on track to open by twenty twenty three. The college is in the process of designing and building a world class Palm Springs campus that truly is. That is truly going to be like no place else. The new campus will serve as a regional workforce innovation center. Where students can learn and train for jobs and careers in the areas of digital media, film, hospitality, culinary arts. Healthcare, architecture and sustainability. When the expanded academic space opens in twenty twenty three, it will replace temporary classrooms and computer labs now used in our, in our temporary Palm Springs site. And provide greater accessibility to college classes for residents of the Western Coachella Valley and visitors to our community. The campus will feature. Modern instruction spaces, experiential labs, student commons, flexible event spaces and. Specifically, a high tech digital accelerator space and classroom. The permanent campus will allow College of the Desert to accommodate enrollment growth with traditional students. And will increase our efforts to provide training for our local workforce as well as bringing people from around the world for professional development opportunities. We have a long distinguished history of linking with public and private sector partners to create academic and career themed programming that is vital to the growth of our region. Partnering with our industry leaders to ensure our programs and facilities meet workforce needs is a core tenet. To our college. During a special presentation during Modernism Week in March, the college outlined a partnership with Cal Poly Pomona School of Architecture and the Palm Springs Architecture Alliance. This serves, this serves as an example of how the new campus will educate and train students for next generation jobs and careers. This campus represents an unprecedented opportunity for our students, business partners and community. And we are very excited about the most possibilities it brings. Amid the COVID, COVID nineteen pandemic, we will continue to ensure that quality educational facilities are available to our community. And we'll take another look through the filter of safety, security and moments. We will need to determine how the pandemic may impact program needs as well as space and equipment requirements. And we'll monitor both how things change and the innovations that emerge. While being open to ad- adaptations during our facilities planning. Teamwork organizational development. To ensure we are providing the best possible education for our students, we need to examine our organization by helping faculty and staff develop to their fullest. Potential and ensure we are working together as a team to keep students as our primary focus. This has been extremely important during, this has been an extremely important part of our COVID nineteen response. In the two weeks following the initial campus closure in March, more than four hundred faculty members underwent virtual training on remote instruction and students. And students were given access to short videos about online learning. The college has also provided laptops, Chromebooks and webcams to faculty, staff and students. Our faculty and staff development efforts are continuing despite the COVID crisis. This month, thirty three faculty will complete a year long training program. Through the Association of College and University Educators, a queue that prepares credentials and supports them with practices designed to improve student success. In addition, about two dozen faculty, staff and administrators are continuing their work towards their doctoral degrees. This three year program, which the cohort began in fall two thousand eighteen, covers a wide range of topics in educational leadership. With an end goal of helping participants develop solutions to pressing issues here at the college. We've also made great strides in the celebration of our professional development plan, which was approved earlier this month by the College Planning Council. A living document that plan, the plan meets requirements of the two thousand seventeen accreditation quality focus essay. Analyze with our institutional goals of professional development for staff. I appreciate the thought and effort the Professional Development Committee has put into. I appreciate the thought and effort the Professional Development Committee has put into developing this plan, and look forward to seeing its implementation on our campus. Make no mistake, we have a lot of talented and dedicated faculty and staff here at College of the Desert, which is evident in the outstanding work we are doing. Several of our faculty and staff have been recognized this year for their achievements, including Jessica Enders, Director of Education Centers, Amanda Phillips, Dean Counseling Services, and Katie Chartiere, Assistant Director, First Year Experience, were awarded a Community Impact Award in October from the firm Sklovac Baron, MP, Murphy, and Pinky for their work with the Edge and pledge program. Professor Darlene Romano won a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Desert Theater League. It was also recently announced that Dr. Romano was named Faculty of the Year. Professor Laurlee Jackson was finalist for the Best Radio Faculty Advisor in the United States by the prestigious Intercollegiate Broadcasting System. Ray Munoz, Maintenance and Operations Administrative Assistant, was recognized by the City of Indio for her nonprofit work helping veterans with education and scholarship information. Counselor Jose Simo is being recognized by one future with the Empowering Students Award. Each and every year, College of the Desert works to be active in our community. This involves projects that extend beyond the classroom to cover economic workforce development and community outreach to improve the lives of students and others across Coachella Valley. During our annual State of the College dress, which took place this past January, we celebrated the reopening of the beautiful new Hill and shared with the community our annual report, which highlights many of the same achievements discussed here today. College leadership and the foundation will continue to use this document to spread the news of the college's good work throughout the rest of the year. Major sponsors of the state of the college included the College of the Desert Foundation, Peggy Cravens, Moss Construction. During the event, not only did the community hear from the college, but they also got to hear directly from our students themselves. This gathering of leaders from across the Coachella Valley helps these influencers see the direct impact College of the Desert has on our students and the wider role we play in the advancement of the entire region. The good work we're doing impacts more than just our region. As noted by Governor Gavin Newsom recently, our community colleges are the backbone of workforce training in California. Today, seventy percent of first responders, firefighters, police, paramedics, nurses, medical technicians, and other essential workers receive training at the state's community colleges. These essential workers are out there now risking their own lives, working, helping, fighting, and saving others. The work we are doing to train these workers is paramount, and our commitment to the community goes beyond training. When the COVID crisis began, our employees, staff, and students were some of the first to respond to community needs. Their efforts include donations of thousands of pieces of personal protective equipment, including masks, gowns, hair bonnets, gloves, and shoe coverings to local hospitals and the Desert AIDS Project by the college's nursing program. Utilization of 3D printers to create and donate face shields to local hospitals and healthcare facilities. The addition of a one-unit parenting class to help parents and guardians navigate these challenging times. The creation of low-cost online personal enrichment training is by pace, tailored to residents that would normally participate in classes at their local community or senior center. Fourth semester RN students are working a special COVID-19 crisis hotline at Eisenhower Medical Center, helping the community while fulfilling requirements towards graduation. I am incredibly grateful that we, as a college, have the ability to continue our efforts to advance education and transform lives even in the midst of a global pandemic. These are just a sampling of some of the efforts our College of the Desert family is participating in as a response to the COVID crisis. There are many more individuals that have stepped up to the challenges we face today. I'll only use a short video montage of many of our COVID and non-COVID efforts throughout
You're the engine that makes all things go. And you're always in disguise, my hero. I see your light in the dark, smile in my face when we all know it's hard. There's no way to ever pay you back. Bless your heart, know I love you for that. Honest and selfless. I don't know if this helps it, but good job. You're doing a good job, a good job. You're doing a good job, don't get too down. The world needs you now, know that you matter, 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 yeah. You're doing a good job, a good job. You're doing a good job, don't get too down. The world needs you now, know that you matter, 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 yeah. Six in the morning, as soon as you walk through that door, everyone needs you again. The world's out of order. It's not a sound when you're not around. All day on your feet, harder. Keep that energy, I know. When it feel like the end of the road, you don't let go, you just press forward. You're the engine that makes all things go. Always in disguise, my hero. I see a light in the dark, smile in my face when we all know it's hard. There's no way to ever pay you back. Bless your heart, know I love you for that. Honest and selfless. I don't know if this helps it, but good job. You're doing a good job, a good job. Good job. You're doing a good job, don't get too down. The world needs you now, know that you matter, 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 yeah.
I'd like to, in closing, share a letter that I received a few weeks ago from a first-year nursing student who wrote about COVID and how it has impacted almost every aspect of his life. We'll try to read it. Laid off from his front desk job at a local hotel, he finds himself in the same situation as many Coachella in Coachella Valley. However, what struck me most about this young man is his courage and his determination I write my story with a hopeful and grateful heart. My spirit is unbroken and my faith still intact. In a time of extreme need, when both my savings and my pantry at home ran dry, the college and the foundation stepped in when I asked for help. For this, I am forever thankful. The funds that have been granted to me will go a long way. I am committed in doing my part in battling this disease. I am using this time to focus even more on my studies. As I prepare to join the ranks of heroic nurses who serve as frontline warriors in this war. All right, we're almost done here. During this dark moment in time, I still believe that we are supported by the universe. This extremely generous gift is an example of such. I am taking this day by day, hour by hour. I keep my heart open and my head held high with the strong belief that, like all else, this too shall pass. We can all learn from this young man. In the midst of anxiety and confusion triggered by the coronavirus pandemic, hope and heroes abound. Now more than ever, our actions are creating an impact that is all around us, and I challenge all of us to stay committed and continue to put our students and their success first. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, President Kenman. We now move to conducting the college's business with consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be considered for approval by single vote without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda to be discussed and considered separately on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move, Dr. Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second, Trustee Garcia.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, President Kenman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Stefan.
Aye.
Trustee Brett.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Trustee Wilson, you're paused, you're unmuted.
Aye.
Thank you.
Trustee Yon.
Motion carried. We now move to, there are no items called, so we now move to the Board of Trustees, item thirteen, thirteen point oh one, Board Policy 5015 Resident Determination, second reading. Do I have a motion to approve Board Policy 5015 determination for the second reading as presented?
So move, Trustee Garcia.
Is there a second?
So, second, Trustee Stefan.
Any discussion? Hearing none, President Kenman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Student Trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Stefan.
Aye.
Trustee Perez.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton. Trustee Yon.
Aye, motion carried. We have no items from Human Resources, our administrative services are from instruction, so we have information item. This is administrative procedure review. The following administrative procedures are brought today as information items only. These administrative procedures have gone through Executive Cabinet and College Planning Council. They are AP 500 Property Management and AP 6520 Security for District Property. President Kenman, do you have a comment?
I, John Ramon, would you like to speak to these, please?
Yeah, both of these administrative procedures have gone through a first and second reading at CP and were approved, and they're the basic outline of the procedures that we do in managing both our property and as well as cleaning up security for our property. The property management merely reflected a change in responsibilities with our new director upon planning and facilities. The other one, the Security for District Property, was a pretty extensive redo, and we had pretty extensive input from a lot of different groups, and it includes now a use of security camera policy that we didn't have before. So we're very pleased that this, the work that was done and getting this passed.
Thank you, and this is information items only, no discussion. Move to study session, actually, first item, the celebration of success, and we want to thank Dr. Kenman for his presentation. The second is student trustee evaluation, which we also completed during reports, so I'd like to move to board self-evaluation. Effective governing board assess how well they perform their governance responsibilities and use the result to enhance board effectiveness. The valuation reminds each trustee to fulfill their responsibilities of trusteeship. The importance of annual board self-evaluations are underscored by the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges. The accreditation self-study is conducted every six years, in which we provide this evidence. Now, please, everyone keep in mind, the evaluation we are discussing today covers only the 2019 academic year, and that's none of the disruptions that have happened in the past few months have impacted this evaluation, but the results of the evaluation is these cover only the 2019 academic year. I would like to review some of the board's strengths by sharing that we are all focused and want to see student success. In addition, the board is dedicated to our mission, vision, and values, and we all want what is best for the college. During 2019, the board felt that there were several major accomplishments, and I'd like to share just a few. Celebrating sixty years of College of the Desert, development of satellite campuses, completion of the facilities master plan, record-breaking commencement, continued success of the Edge and pledge programs, held our fourth state championship, a very successful family night, continuation of the doctoral program, and received the NC3 School on Drive on the board. The board has areas that they would like to improve upon, such as improving the orientation and training of new board members. The board will review and consider other methods to improve this process. In addition, the board would like to have more opportunities to learn about programs offered and unique efforts made by the college. And lastly, we would like to improve community relations engagement for other areas, such as the Eastern Coachella Valley and Desert Hot Springs. A few important changes we felt we need to improve upon are, first, adhering to the agenda as well as posted times to reconvene from closed session, provide board reports within the allotted time. Prepare staff presentations should a meeting move quickly. More questions, discussions for our study sessions, and this was set in 2019, a professional setting in the new chambers for the board to meet, and hopefully at some time in the future, we will be able to meet face to face in new chambers. The board would like to share a few issues we would like to make a priority this year. Supporting the superintendent president. Rebuild strained community relations. Supporting the Foundation and Alumni Association. Address the future of the Alumni Association. Evaluate student retention completion data. Fill job vacancies for the Foundation. The San Pablo Corridor for the Palm Desert Campus. Staffing and services offered at the college library. And expansion of the nursing program. That was my review of our evaluation, and again, I would remind that this applied to 2019. At this time, I would like any board members, if they would have any additional comments they would like to add for the self-evaluation. Any board members? Aurora, you're muted.
Mr. Chair, this is Trustee Wilson. I guess when I look at the prize, it would really incur a retreat. The board has asked for that several times, to have a board retreat where we can sit down and have more opportunity to some of the issues that some of the scores.
Trustee Wilson, your audio was breaking up a little bit, so let me summarize, and you verified that that was intent. You raised the need for a board retreat, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, your audio broke up, but sure that everyone heard you. Thank you. Any other trustee care to comment on board evaluation instrument? Thank you. Future agenda items, please submit any future agenda items you may have to the Board Secretary, and they can be incorporated into the meeting minutes. We'd like to close the public portion of our Board of Trustees meeting today in honor of R.D. Hubbard, who was a good friend and an incredibly generous donor to the College of the Desert and many other institutions across the Coachella Valley. He will be sorely missed. Mr. Hubbard and his wife Joan have been instrumental in the success of the college, and our thanks to their years of donations to our nursing and research programs, as well as the fund for student success. As Chairman of the Big Horn Golf Club Charities, Mr. Hubbard also directed funds to provide scholarships, support College of the Desert academic programs, and benefit our students who are military veterans. Our Veterans Resource Center was made possible in large part by the financial contributions of Big Horn Golf Club charities. Mr. Hubbard's drive, success, and business acumen will continue to inspire us all. Tierquake College of the Desert students and alumni who benefited from his philanthropy, he leaves behind an extraordinary legacy that guarantees a better future for the many people, including our students, who were touched by his kindness. At this time, the board will recess to close session. The live streaming portion of this meeting will conclude. Should there be any reportable action, I will report to the Board Secretary, which we incorporated into our meeting minutes and posted by the end of business today. I see it is now 11:03, so let's reconvene in closed session in 10 minutes, which would be 11:13. So we are now moving to closed session.